The regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, March 14th, 2023, is now called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation, which will be given by Councilman Randy Fig.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight to ask for your wisdom as we deal with the business of the county. I pray you just guide and direct this meeting for those that be speaking. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
May I have a motion on the minutes of the February 14th, 2023, meeting? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The minutes of the February 14th meeting are approved. May I have a motion on reappointments?
Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion to reappoint Lakeville Economic Development Commission Dennis Heckman, Walkerton Economic Development Commission Gene Reese, North Liberty Economic Development Commission Sarah Williams.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any council discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Dennis Heckman is reappointed to the Lakeville Economic Development Commission. Gene Reese is reappointed to the Walkerton Economic Development Commission. And Sarah Williams is reappointed to the North Liberty Economic Development Commission. Next up are appointments. And we need to choose two members of the public to serve on the Redevelopment Commission. The council statutorily was required to interview at least three candidates. The council did that last week. And we are now ready to take a public vote on appointments to the Redevelopment Commission. May I have a motion on-
Mr. President, I nominate Dick File and Ben Horvath.
Is there a second to that motion? We have a motion to nominate Ben Horvath and Dick File to the Redevelopment Commission. Is there any council comment on this?
I would like to-
Ms. Hess.
I support Dick File's nomination. I do not support Ben-
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Okay. I support Dick File's nomination, but I cannot support Ben Horvath's nomination. I felt his resume was very weak compared to the other candidate. In addition, the Indiana State Police investigation last year into the former county clerk, which exonerated her, did not exonerate Ben Horvath, who was, as an election board member, supposed to open the doors of the election of the ballots of that day, on the morning of May 2nd. In the report, it said that on the morning of May 2nd, 2022, Horvath violated the duty imposed on him by IC 3-11-10-10 as an election board member by failing to appear or communicate a designee, and thus bears responsibility for creating the exigent circumstances then present and existing. So I cannot vote for that motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further council comment on the motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Tanner.
I'd just like to echo Mrs. Hess's comments, specifically with the lack of experience Mr. Horvath has, and the, quite honestly, the breadth and depth of experience that Mr. Zornig presented in his interview and his resume. So I cannot support Mr. Horvath's nomination.
Thank you. Any further council comment on the nominations?
Mr. President.
Mr. Tandray.
I too share in what my two colleagues have said. I think the better candidate of the three was Mr. Zornig along with Mr. File, and will not be unable to support Mr. Horvath. And my concern is that state police investigation that did list very pointedly that he was responsible for some of the situation which occurred last year. And that concerns me about having somebody on our Redevelopment Board Commission who's been cited that way by the Indiana State Police. So I won't be unable to support him.
Any further council comment? Hearing, none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mrs. Drake.
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
No.
Ms. Hess.
No.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Tandray.
No.
Mr. Tanner.
No.
And Mr. Root.
Yes.
The ordinance passes five, four.
Let the record show that Mr. Dick File and Mr. Ben Horvath were appointed to the Redevelopment Commission of St. Joseph County. Next up is report from county auditor.
No report.
Report from county commissioner? Report from any council special committee? Hearing, none. We'll move to first readings. Clerk, may you read the first bill?
Bill number 39-23, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council declaring a portion of St. Joseph County an economic revitalizationary pursuant to IC 6-1.1-12.1.1 et sequens declaring resolution. Petitioner AM General LLC.
Bill number 39-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
Bill number 41-23, an ordinance to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of St. Joseph County public way or public place. Petitioner Deborah Lukowski.
Bill number 41-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
Bill number 42-23, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at 12525 Anderson Road from our single-family District 2O Office District. Petitioner Miller Family Development Company.
Bill number 42-23 is assigned to the Land Use and Planning Committee. And that concludes first readings. Next up are resolutions. Clerk, will you please read Bill number 38-23?
Bill number 38-23, resolution of the St. Joseph County Council approving the St. Joseph County Council, County Board of Commissioners discontinuance of the county home, Portage Manor, pursuant to Indiana Code 12-30-1-6. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Council.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I'd like to make a comment on Resolution Bill number 38-23. And that, because this is a resolution statutorily, and we did check with Luke Britt at the Indiana Public Access, we are not required to hold a public hearing on Bill number 38-23. But the council has the right to override that and hold a public hearing if they so choose. And so I would ask for a motion, Mr. Fig, on Bill number 38-23.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion, three parts to my motion. First one, to allow public comments on this resolution, 38-23. The second part is allow 30 minutes if you're for it or against it. Now, that's not one person talking 30 minutes. You still get your three minutes. But a grant total of 30 minutes for each side to say what they want to tonight. And number three, I make the part of my motion is to let those that are against this resolution, they get the first 30 minutes. That's my motion.
Is there a second? Second? We have a motion to have a public hearing. We have a motion to limit the both sides to 30 minutes, and we each, and we have a motion to let the opposition side go first. Any comment on the motion?
I guess the only comment that I would have on that motion is, first of all, thank you for overriding Mr. Britt as far as not having a public hearing. Do appreciate that. But at the, the second point I want to make is, an issue this serious, this passionate, I mean, look at the room. It's packed, okay? And we've been down this road many times before over the years with public issues that people take their valuable time and come out because they really want to be heard. So what I'm really saying is, I really cannot support 30 minutes. Because we have had issues on this council, and I'm talking to the ones that have been on here for a long time. We've had issues come before us over the years where we've actually left this building at midnight.
One o'clock.
Okay, one o'clock in the morning. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't have anything to do until eight o'clock in the morning and be at WSPT.
Public outbursts will not be tolerated tonight.
I would just say I agree with Mr. Morton.
Any further council comments on the motion?
Mr. President, while I appreciate Mr. Fig's motions, the third part concerns me when precedent and our council rules on normal occasion allows for the petitioner for to always precede those in opposition. And I do not understand the logic or reason. I can make my presumptions, but I do not understand the logic or reason for reordering the structure of who's in favor of versus against presenting on this topic.
Can I comment on that?
Morton.
This is just my personal interpretation. I think in past issues such as this one, when we have found ourselves here 11 o'clock, midnight, or even after, people tend to obviously get tired. And I think there's been a feeling that when people come and speaking against it, when they go last, then they really don't, you know, people have run out of gas, and they really don't have that proper time to really express what they want to express. So I'm thinking that's why Mr. Fig was gracious enough to offer that as an alternative. But there again, let's not get confused. 30 minutes? Uh-uh. I totally, totally disagree with that. That's just me.
Any further? Ms. Drake.
Are there two points on this agenda where people can speak on Portage Manor?
They do. Get closer.
I'm in favor for anyone who wants to speak, speaking tonight. I think we're trying to make it order it correctly. But if you don't think that you have enough time, I'm okay with extending the time period.
Would you like to offer an amendment to the motion?
I would like to make an amendment to the motion to keep it how Randy offered, with the exception of extending the time to as far as it's needed to allow all people to speak.
I second.
Any comment on the amendment from any council member?
I agree with it. That's my comment.
That seems much more reasonable, Mr. Root.
All right. So the amendment, or the motion as amended, is that there will be a public hearing, and that those who are in opposition will speak first, and those who are against, I'm sorry, those who are against the resolution will speak first, and those who are for the resolution will speak last. That is the current amendment, then. Any further council discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. The amendment has passed. It is now part of the motion. May I have a motion on the, I'm sorry, may I have a motion on the bill, on the motion as amended?
Motion to deny. Motion to deny the bill as amended.
I'm sorry. We are, we're not voting on the bill. We're voting on, we're voting on Mr. Fig's motion to hold a public hearing and have those in opposition go second, those that are supportive go first. I'm sorry. Now you've got me confused. Yeah. Those in opposition to the Commissioner's Amendment first, those supportive second. That is the motion on the table. Is there-
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Any council discussion on the main motion? Hearing, none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion passes. We will hold a public hearing on Bill number 38-23. And the motion will be that those opposed speak first, those in favor speak last. And with that, yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Just to make clear, as I assume I'm going to watch the time, are we still looking at the normal three minutes?
Yes.
Three minutes per speaker.
Yes. No.
No.
No. That's not what I understood her to say. No.
And I'll do this under 15 seconds.
Thank you. Clerk, would you please read Bill number 38-23?
Bill number 38-23, resolution of the St. Joseph County Council approving the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners discontinuance of the county home, Portage Manor, pursuant to Indiana Code 12-30-1-6. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Council.
Petitioner.
Carl Baxmeyer, Board of Commissioners. As you know, this is a difficult project. This has been studied for several years now as to what to do with Portage Manor. You had a presentation regarding some options, the options being to close Portage Manor, to build a large Portage Manor, the same size as currently exists, and/or to build a smaller unit. As was noted in those presentations, to either build a same size or a larger unit would require a substantial investment by the county in either the construction, servicing the debt on the construction, or subsidizing the operation. This did not receive any comments back regarding that. So in order to avoid kicking the can down the road, as has been done for far too long, the Commissioners, by a two-to-one vote, passed a resolution suggesting that we continue the, discontinue the operation of Portage Manor. I think we can't lose sight of the fact that this has an impact on the residents. Absolutely. Nobody's disagreeing with that. But it's also in a condition where we don't want to keep people in that condition. That building has either got to, has to be renovated in order to continue its use, which is not economically viable, or build a new Portage Manor. And lacking right now any support for that, we passed the resolution to close, and hope you'll support it. Now, I know you will hear from some of the others that some proposals have been put forth. We heard one at the committee meeting from Todd Ziegler about landmark preservation. We had the privilege of talking to a woman who wants to proceed with perhaps acquiring and renovating the existing facility. In that case, in that case, she was pointedly asked, does the facility need to maintain its residents in order to proceed? And the answer was no. So in order to continue the process, we would respectfully ask that you consider supporting the Commissioner's resolution to discontinue the use of Portage Manor. That doesn't mean we can't look for down the road, other alternatives, but in order to keep the process moving and to ensure that the residents have access to alternative housing, we ask that you support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing, none. We'll move to public hearing. I want to lay the ground rules for public hearing. Each speaker is given three minutes to address the council. We need you to sign in at the sign-in sheet before you speak. And when you open with your remarks, we need your name and address for the record. With that said, we will open the public hearing now for those who are opposed to the Commissioner's resolution.
As many of you who have heard me at this podium over the last 30 years know, in my opinion, government at all levels has a tendency to get involved in things that it should not. And our overall bureaucracy in this country, I think, is huge and costly and generally inefficient, doing things that people would better do themselves, or private businesses they create. But that being said, I feel that next to police and streets, looking after those who can't look after themselves is one of the most fundamental things that government can and should do. By this, I mean orphans, people who are severely impaired. I mean, mental illness runs a whole gamut, and physical impairments likewise, from mild but functional to severe and incapable of functioning independently. This latter group is one that I think our government does need to serve. But how? So often, government administrations are not equipped to find specialized solutions. That's why it's such an amazing thing that we actually have one here in St. Joe County that works in Portage Manor. Who knows at this point how it got where it is, but it is right here in our community doing an unusually efficient and effective job for this population. My PhD is in psychology, so I know a little about what it takes to do these kinds of programs. And when so many other programs are failing, and so many proposed programs are going to fail, they accomplish a little, or sometimes even make matters worse, this program has run effectively for decades. And Clifton, there is a fine line between abuse and proper protective care for someone who is, can potentially be a danger to themselves. My point is, when you've got something that works, you need to do whatever you can to keep it. Other counties may be shutting these down, that's because they can't do it. But for whatever reason, we can. We are. And that's something to be proud of. I'd like to see us be the only one in the state that managed to continue to serve this population on its own. We may end up being one that all over the country people go to. How are you pulling this off? I know the building is old, not conducive to ADA. I hope we're looking at historical status. I hope we're looking at finding philanthropic support, people who see what a gem we've got. I hope it's possible that maybe Portage Manor's intake procedures could be minutely modified so that we could qualify for some of the short-term care things that are going on right now. Whatever the case, I'm optimistic that our newly-elected leaders are going to find potential budget savings, and that this council can reevaluate Tiff districts to find whatever money it takes to keep Portage Manor preserved. Thank you.
Public applause will not be allowed on any speaker, either for or against.
I'm Dr. Silvana Atala, 50535 Fox Trail in Granger, Indiana. I'm also, I was referred to as the woman who was interested. So just to make it short, I mean, I know there's a lot to talk about, but I know this building, I did get the opportunity to visit the building last week, and it's, it's just a beautiful building. All the residents do deserve a chance to, to stay in that building. I know I don't have a business degree, but I know with my passion, and I know that, that building deserves to stay, and the residents deserve to stay, just with all their mental illnesses and, you know, they're considered underserved. And just to displace them randomly to different places, I don't think that we should, as a community, should not support that. We should support that they stay where they're at and try to figure out what to do. There's always an easy answer, you know, close or shut things down, but that's, that is not what, that is not what is right. What is right is that we should keep it open and just figure out a way to make it work. You know, I came up with some numbers, and I think just with the right leadership and just right things in place, this place can, can definitely stay open for a long period of time. I suggested, like, you know, renovations are for sure needed, but they can be done over a period of years. We can prioritize what needs to be done. And just saying that, I did not say that the residents should not be in the building. Renovations can be done while they are there. They just need to be kind of moved around a little bit, but it, it can happen. There is an offer from, I was told, that there's an offer from a different facility that are, they're willing to take the residents for a short period of time if we need to relocate some of them, just as a temporary measure. If we're doing renovations in one wing or the other, they are open to taking some of the residents. So I think if the whole community is working towards finding an answer, finding a resolution that, you know, to keep the residents, I think this is what we should be working towards. And I hope you consider, you know, this offer.
Ma'am?
Thank you.
If not, if I'm out of order, then that's fine.
I completely agree with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We always do.
You can't, yeah.
That's what I'm going to do.
But we can't. Go ahead.
Right. Thank you. Ma'am? Excuse me.
Doctor.
Doctor? I guess I'm very surprised at your narrative, because if I'm not mistaken, tell me if I am, Commissioner Baxmeyer just made the statement earlier that you had said when the renovations, when the possible renovations would happen, then the residents could not stay. Didn't I just, didn't I just hear you say something totally different?
Yeah. I did not say that they cannot stay. Some of them need to be just relocated within the building. I did specifically, when he was there, because he was there at the meeting last week, and I said that there are four wings, and they're not all fully occupied. So you can close one wing to renovate it and just move everybody else in different places of the building. If you cannot, there's a building that the director of that facility, of Portage Manor, actually said that she's already in contact, and there's different, a different facility that can actually accommodate a couple if we need to. But it's, there's an answer to, but the building does not have to be completely empty in order to renovate.
I guess I'm in, I guess I'm in the quandary that Commissioner Baxmeyer would make that statement, and you just come up here and say something totally opposite. I don't understand that.
Maybe he misunderstood what I said, because he, he did ask, just, he did ask if I would still be interested in the building if it was empty. And my answer was yes, but that does not mean that I want the building empty. I guess this is where he misunderstood. He said, would you really still be interested in acquiring the building and renovating? I said, yes, absolutely.
Well, that, I just think that that's an extremely important point in this whole narrative. I really do.
Okay. No, I think he misunderstood, but you know, whether, if all the residents can stay and just be relocated within the building, as I said, I, you know, I kind of explain it as if you're doing renovations in your own home, you're not going to renovate the whole home, because you're living in it. You can just move some around and do one thing at a time. You don't have to do the whole entire project at one time.
Thank you for that clarification.
I have a quick question.
Mr. Tandray.
Dr. Atala?
Yes.
Thanks for having interest in Portage Manor. We appreciate that. We probably agree that, you know, Portage Manor might be better in the hands of somebody in the private sector or not-for-profit, and I'm glad you came forward, as others have come forward, to make that plea to keep it open. What do you think? I know you just, this idea was just presented to you recently, and this sense of urgency came to us in terms of it needs to close February 7th, so it hasn't been a lot of time to invest. How long would it take you to develop a business plan? How long would it take you to develop a business plan, to see where you are, to see if this is actually viable, from your perspective, in terms of finance, business plan?
I would say about four weeks, just to have everything complete. I had already started a business plan for a building in order to do assisted living. That was, I've been working on it for a year, but it was a smaller size, it was something different. And when this opportunity was presented to me, I just felt it was a message, you know, from God, you know, it's just a, it just kind of dropped in my lap, something that I've always wanted to do. And I did tell them that the first thing, whoever is low-income in the building stays, like, nobody, and I can sign paperwork from here to the moon, nobody, whoever is there stays there. And just to supplement the income with private payers or just different ways that, you know, we can figure out. But I know that it is workable, it is something that is definitely for sure doable.
So you think within four weeks, you'll know if it's a go or no-go?
Yes.
From your, from your perspective?
Just to get all the numbers. I mean, I have to go back to the building and, you know, get a contractor and just see what we need to get done, so it's, it is going to take a good four weeks to get it done.
Thank you.
I have a couple of quick questions, doctor. Are all the wings, do all the wings have the same deficiencies?
Well, the major thing is, there's no sprinkler system, there's no fire suppression in the building, so I guess this is kind of one of the main issues. Otherwise, I mean, as cleanliness goes, it's really clean in the inside. The other issue that I saw was bathrooms. So each wing has only one bathroom, with like, three showers and three, you know, toilets and, so it's, that is something that needs to be looked into, is creating more bathrooms for the residents, just to accommodate a little bit more, so they're not...
You...
Decorum will be kept tonight. Thank you.
And, I mean, these are the two major issues. I know there's parts in the back of the building that the bricks are, you know, fell off the walls, but this is on the outside and it does not affect the residents, so that's why I'm saying it's just, you know, prioritize. Yes, you for sure need a sprinkler system, you for sure need, you know, more bathrooms, just certain things that can be done. And as, you know, as time goes by, every, you know, six months to a year, you can slot in a new project, you know, yes, fix the outside wall of a building that has nothing to do with the safety of residents, it's just on the outside. So just different things that can be done in, you know, in many years.
On the, on your business plan, do you have a general idea how much it would cost you to do the renovations?
Just the, so, in order to go private pay, because I think this would be the main revenue, it would be around a million to start. And then as, as things go, and that's not a million for the whole entire building, I guess, that's, let me take that back, not the whole entire building. But my idea was to, one of the wings, to change that into memory care, which is for sure a source of revenue in a lot of buildings, because this is what I do. I'm a physician that goes to assisted living, nursing homes, things, so this is what I've been doing for many years. So I know kind of what is needed in the community.
But the cost to renovate the whole building's much more than a million. Have you estimated what you think that will be?
I would say at least eight million, about.
Okay. And so let's, let's say you're right, it's eight million. I have businesses of my own, I know how banks operate. For a business loan, you need to have somewhere between twenty and forty percent of the capital. Okay? Do you have two to three million dollars?
Not in my bank account, for sure.
So you don't, so you wouldn't have the required capital to get the loan? Okay. Well, that's important, you know.
Well, the banks, because I know that I'm working on a different project, and I know the bank took the building as collateral, so they, they send an appraisal to see how much that building is worth, and then that is put in as the twenty percent of what you need to put in.
Okay. So you would count on the building being appraised at two to three million dollars?
Yeah, so whatever it's appraised at...
In its current condition.
Yeah.
Wow. Have you, have you built a similar business plan for a similar facility? I mean, where are you, where are you getting your expertise in the business plan, is that's what I'm asking you?
All right. So I, I have a building, both my husband and I own a building downtown South Bend, and this is what we've been working on for the past year. This is why I said I've been working on a building. The initial plan was assisted living, that's why I came with all the numbers, but as the building, it's, the rooms or the apartments that I have are about fifteen to sixteen. So then we had to change our business plan, because looking at the revenue from those, if it's assisted living, and looking at nursing and all that, it's, it wasn't just, it wasn't going to make ends meet. So we had to change and do something different, just senior apartments. But this is where...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. I mean, this is where I've been working with an accountant and, you know, just trying to...
Sure. So as an assisted living facility, would you try to become Medicaid-eligible?
Yes.
And I was, I was a hospital administrator before, I was a teacher, and so I'm familiar with Medicaid requirements, and I'm sure you're very familiar. And so we both know, walking in that building, there's an incredible amount of work to do before you're going to be Medicaid-eligible, right? We both understand that.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rupp.
Ma'am?
Mr. Tanner?
Uh, Dr. Atala?
Ma'am?
Sorry. I may or may not be the last one, sorry. Thank you. Last week, one of the resident's family members reached out and happened to connect us. I didn't know you from Adam before that meeting. Thank you for your enthusiasm toward this. One of the questions that I have outstanding is, and it's my current concern for the potential closure of Portage Manor, to begin with, is not just sustaining services for the existing residents, who without a Portage Manor would be scattered among not just St. Joseph County and other facilities, but most likely other counties, maybe even other states. I don't think that's too hyperbolic of a statement, because of just the capacity our community has. But there's inherently going to be a need for a facility like this, for residents like Portage Manor, that occur tomorrow, next week, ten years from now. Would you have a level of commitment, promissory statements and things that, of that nature, that you would dedicate a portion, a specific portion of the building in perpetuity to serve the kinds of residents that Portage Manor serves today? Because inherently, our community will continue to need a facility or a service like this for those with intellectual or developmental disabilities.
I would for sure. I mean, as it stands now, I understand, like, two-thirds of the facility is, I mean, it's occupied with that, you know, particular population, and I do have a commitment, you know, if, if things go the way that I, you know, I know, I mean, I know nothing is for sure, but as, as I think I've planned correctly, that, you know, there can be, you know, can be additions to the building, you know, in the future, and definitely absorbing all these, you know, all these patients or residents, because working in assisted living, I know for a fact that when, you know, the nursing goes out to do an evaluation for a particular patient, if they have a lot of psychiatric illnesses, the answer is a hundred percent for sure, no, we're not taking you. Or they come in for a day and then they are sent out to the hospital, because nobody can handle them. So I think this is where Portage Manor comes in. It's, it's just serving people that nobody else wants to, you know, accept responsibility for.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ann Watson. I'm the executive director of the St. Vincent de Paul Society, located at 520 Crescent Avenue in South Bend. And I'm here tonight to express my opposition to the resolution and my support of Dr. Atala and her plan to keep Portage Manor open. St. Vincent de Paul has been serving our community since 1904, and interestingly enough, we've been serving people at Portage Manor since January of 1905, when it was still the county poor farm. Our members have been instrumental in advocating for the rights of the people living at the poor farm, and now Portage Manor, for over a hundred years. And we continue to support residents today in various ways. The mission of Portage Manor states that it offers secure, affordable housing to older citizens and others over the age of eighteen that are mentally or physically disabled, or whose abilities and medical conditions limit their independence. A look at the history of Portage Manor highlights that our community has a desire and feels a responsibility to care for our own most vulnerable citizens. These folks are our most vulnerable citizens. Many have challenges that require the level of care that Portage Manor provides, but may not qualify for the care that they need with their insurance. Many have little to no family or support structures, and some are unable to advocate for themselves. Most importantly, Portage Manor is their home, and that's it. It's their home. They've lived, they live there, they have their community there. You know, history has shown us what could happen to residents who suffer from mental illness if, that may not qualify for other types of assistance, if a place like Portage Manor is shut down. We already have a housing crisis in our community. Where will the affordable housing be found for Portage Manor residents? Dr. Atala's plan allows the residents to stay in the community they call home while building renovations are being undertaken. Her plan honors their inherent human dignity and allows them to live out the rest of their days in a comfortable, therapeutic environment, surrounded by their community of friends and caregivers. Her plan shows promise, probably the first plan that shows, has shown promise in a long time, in regards to Portage Manor. I've known Dr. Atala for several years, I've known her to be intelligent, thoughtful, and caring. If she sees the need, the need is there, and she'll get it done. I firmly believe that closing Portage Manor without consideration of these plans is a huge mistake by the council, and as a representative of an organization that has served the council, served Portage Manor for 119 years, I'm just asking you to hit pause and think about it. Allow her proposal to come forward before you make this groundbreaking decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Janet Macholsky, 1117 South 31st Street. I've been a special educator for 47 years. I'm an advocate for people that sometimes have a hard time advocating for themselves. They're wonderful people. I was really pleased to see all the residents, some of the residents from Portage Manor be here tonight, to be able to show people that, you know, they care. And, and these previous speakers have said some of the things that I wanted to say, but I want to say this. When, there was a real cavalier attitude when I read some of the articles in the newspaper about, well, they could be relocated to Fort Wayne. Fort Wayne is a long way. These people don't have cars, their families are here, their friends are here. You know, we can all get in our car and go where we want. These people don't have that opportunity. They don't have that luxury. And another thing is, they said that, you know, well, they could go with their families. Well, if they could go with their families, and that was the best situation, where do you think they would be now? The best place for them is Portage Manor. And as I read through the beautiful, beautiful history of this place, how neat that they started doing different activities, and, you know, first it was a farm, and they worked on a farm. This is a wonderful historical place, and it would be a terrible, terrible injustice to this community if we didn't save it, historically, and also for all of the people that live there. It is their home, and we, all of us, are responsible for them to make sure that they stay in their home. Thank you.
Please remember to sign in.
I'm here with Dr. Atala to present ourselves for the sake of Portage Manor and its residents. I have a brother who is a resident there, and I'm concerned about his care, welfare...
Ma'am?
Yes?
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
And talk into the microphone, please?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
My name's Linda Ruli. I live at 412 East 4th Street, Mitchell, Waukegan. Shall I start over?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here with Dr. Atala to present ourselves for the sake of Portage Manor and its residents. I have a brother who is a resident there, and I'm concerned about his care, welfare, and future, as well as for all the residents of Portage Manor. This community is in need of mental health facilities to offer more support, especially now where those struggling with mental health are the younger generation and veterans. If the people don't receive help and support, they will end up homeless or in jail, adding to the deficit. I propose to keep the facility open, which will save time and expenditures. Both the community and the county would benefit if someone were to purchase the property, giving equivalent money as the other buyer. This would allow Portage Manor to continue as a resident care facility without further expense to the county. I'm not here to judge or criticize your decision. This is not a ma, excuse me, I'm sorry. This is not a matter of who's right or who's wrong. This is a matter of doing what's right for the people of Portage Manor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mark Huffman, 3016 Portage Avenue. I have been a resident of Portage Manor. Tomorrow will be 33 years that I've been a resident. We, as residents there, have gotten to be like family to each other. There's a lot of love between the residents, a lot of love between the residents and staff people. And taking our home away from us would, for a lot of us, mean that we would have to find new friends, we might have to learn an area, town, that we are not familiar with. The main, the main thing that I wanted to bring up is that we are here because of a lot of the problems that we had. If I, I came to Portage Manor because of being epileptic, I wouldn't have found out seven years ago that I was diabetic, had I not been at Portage Manor. I also may not be here today, had I not been there in November of last year, because I had a stroke, and if I would have been someplace on the street or something, I may have not survived the stroke. But the people at Portage Manor, they make sure that I get my medicine, they make sure that I get it at the times I'm supposed to have it. And because of that, I haven't had any seizures in 33 years. And you see as, you see how well I've been doing, and without Portage Manor, I may not be doing this good at all. So what I would like to recommend is to keep us open, keep the family together. If we move to different facilities, then we don't know all that many people that we have, that we're going to be with.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is, my name is R. Joseph Nowak. I live at 3016 Portage Avenue, so close to Corpus Christi. It's important to receive the sacraments of the Catholic Church, and especially confession in the spring. Peace is best, all understanding, Catholic, I love you, thank you. Please keep it open, it's my home. I wonder about a God daughter, and I promise to be morally behaved. Please speak, and in the scripture it'll be done. Please, thank you for your time. Please speak on behalf of the voiceless, for the rights of all who are vulnerable. Speak to the, out in order to judge with righteousness, to defend the needy and the poor. Please be polite, 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 cause our life, Catholic, I love you, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Melissa McDonald, 3016 Portage Avenue. I am secretary for Portage Manor, resident council. I did hear you say early about council, I know you're not talking about me, but I wanted to know if there is something that Portage Manor residents did to have this phone. We were told that if we didn't keep our smoke lounge clean, that we'd get in trouble, and basically, you guys would want to cut, shut us down. I am tomorrow going to take time to clean up the smoking areas with some of my friends... I am tomorrow going to take time to clean up the smoking areas with some of my friends. I look at the facility from the outside, and you guys got good bones, and everyone's getting along in Portage Manor, no fights. Everyone's trying to get back on their feet, and the people that made it look like that they didn't care are stepping up and saying sorry. Thank you.
My name is Karen Simko. I live at Portage Manor, five years. When I had a stroke, like a couple of years ago, they brought me back in Portage Manor. Then I had another stroke. I couldn't walk. My brother-in-law came and seen me wherever I was in Chicago. Then they brought me in, um, they sent home. They taught me how to walk, stand up, and they sent me walking. They brought me back home with Robin. I loved Robin. She was a nice person. I love it in Portage Manor. Then my family comes seeing me. I love it. I don't want nothing left because my friends are here, and my roommates are nice. I love it. Thank you.
Hi, guys. My name's Mary Walton. I live at 3116 Portage Avenue, in my group home, and I don't want others taking from me.
All right? That's good. That's good. Good job.
My name is Paula Spart, and I live at 3016 Portage Avenue, and I'm all in favor of keeping it open. I was worried about where I'd end up if I couldn't live in the apartment I was in anymore, especially with my own health declining. I was so tired, I didn't get up and take my morning meds until 10:00 PM, and then I had bedbugs. And anyway, they knew how to handle it. I mean, I had to get rid of just about everything I owned. They washed the clothes that I wore over there when I moved in and gave me some more clean clothes, and I took a shower as soon as I could get there. And I made a lot of friends there, and I already had some friends I've known for years. And speaking of family, the ones I already knew were like brother and sister, and I was more than happy to be with them. So anyway, please keep Portage Manor open.
Thank you.
We know each other pretty well.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Ager. I'm at 68822 South Shore. I have a sister that is at Portage Manor. She's been there over 30 years. And she has been through Logan's Port, Westville, to Northwest Elkhart General Hospital, and Oaklawn Center in Madison throughout the years. My question to you is, do you have someone, or are you close to someone, or do you know someone that has mental illness? We have dealt with my sister for years since she was 20, she's 69. And Portage Manor has been the best place where she has been. You take her out of her structure, you put her in someplace else, and I'm sure it'll be a nice place that you'll put her, but she will be out of her structure, just like all these will be out of their structure. They cannot go out of their structure. She cannot take her meds for schizophrenia on her own. She has to be under structure. It breaks my heart to think that you could just take them out of there and think they're going to be okay. They're not. They're not going to be okay. You already have homeless. This will add to it, because if they don't have structure to take their meds, they have episodes. They go into the hospital, they get picked up by the police, they have to go through that whole thing again. And it's hard on a family, it's hard on them. I ask that you, please take it in consideration, what you've heard. Please take time on this. If there's someone that's willing to take over, why not? It's needed. It is needed. I got set, what I heard, read in the paper, I, the accusations that it, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it's like a jail. They lock the windows, they have curfew. That's, that's not so. I've been there a lot of times. My sister has never once, my sister comes and goes as she, as she pleases. When she first went in there, she left twice. Portage Manor called the police, they called us, the family. She was picked up and taken to Madison to get back on her meds. That's the whole process. It is not fun. It's horrible, and we've dealt with it for years until she got to Portage Manor. Please don't close the facility. Please find in your heart to have another alternative, or just to take some more time on this. Thank you.
My name is Julie Calhoun, 51517 Haber Hill Court, South Bend. Do any of you have a brother or relative with mental, physical, or intellectual disability? I sent emails to you all, and you all commissioners, and that's why I'm here, about my brother. My brother Randy Joseph Nowak over there has struggled with mental illness for over 33 years. I've seen him off his medicine, I've seen him with different dosages, I've seen him stable. He's ended up at state hospitals in Logan's Port a few times, and once in Madison, Indiana. Portage Manor has always been the safety net, the destination where he became, becomes stable and where he loves to live. My mom was Joe's guardian and worked so hard to find the right place for him. He has been at Madison Center, like the other speaker just said, and Epworth, but as you know, those places were short-term. And she was extremely fortunate to discover the structured plans, nurses, doctors, social workers, staff, volunteers at Portage Manor. My mom went to heaven in February 2011, and now I'm carrying the torch. I love Joe and need him to stay in a facility that knows all his mannerisms, his religious tendencies, his blessings to others, his gentle way of giving things away to his Portage Manor family. He cannot ever end up at motels for now at the Knights Inn, as I told Dieter a million times, and never responded to me. This is not an atmosphere that he could survive in. If this facility were to close, where exactly would he live that measures up to this gem? I want my brother nearby, not in a town far away. We heard the promises a couple of years ago, promises for a shiny new facility and not to worry, so we didn't. Joe and I were reassured, and now the rug has been pulled out and the wool is covering our eyes. Joe needs this facility. Our family has lived in South Bend all our lives. This is what he knows, and this is where he is comfortable. I could talk about the almighty dollar, the land and power, which is, which is truly the underlying current of this whole debacle, but I won't because others will. I'm focusing on Joe. I'm hoping and praying that Portage Manor at 20, at 3016 Portage Avenue remains open. If not, when this news somewhere needs to fulfill his needs locally in the same moral and ethical way that Portage Manor does, please choose the right path for Joe, me, my family, and the others involved in this situation. You would want your brother local too, wouldn't you? Thank you to Rob and Chris, Sarah, everyone for your Save Portage Manor Facebook mission. And Robert F. Kennedy said, "The purpose of life is to contribute in some way to make things better." Please do it.
My name is Pam Clays, and I live at 1106 Bellevue Avenue in South Bend. I'd first like to thank the doctor for stepping up, and if I'm understanding what I read, she didn't even know that there might be some tax credits. That didn't even bother her. I believe the county commissioners have rushed this through, and I'm asking you, don't rush it. If you've got somebody willing with plans already semi-started, don't rush it. I don't believe the commissioners have looked at all the options. Todd Zeiger from Indiana Landmarks, our own Brian Tanner, they both offered lots of ideas. I don't think the commissioners looked at any ideas, and in fact, people are asking me, what's going on behind closed doors? I don't know. They've spent $2.7 million last week to move the people out. That's almost $3 million of our money. That's crazy. I don't believe you're spending our money correctly. I think we need to work at looking at options for Portage Manor. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Timothy Zaleski. I live at 3016 Portage Avenue. 58 years old, I've only been there six months, but I'm a totally different man because of that place. And the only way I can really explain it is, if you've ever been there, especially at night, early mornings, the animals will come and they approach you. They will be arm lengths away from you, and they're not scared of you. That's how serene the environment is. So it's not just the tenants, us, it's also the, everything that's surrounding it. It's, it's, it's a landmark that just has a feeling of serenity and peace, and that's what, we get there, we feel like we belong. So please reconsider and try to keep it open on a, on a status of trying different things. Okay? Thank you.
My name is Laura McClellan. I live at 6344 Indian Point Road in Leroy Township, Ohio. I am begging you to reconsider and reject the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners proposal to discontinue the county home known as Portage Manor. My brother has lived in St. Joe County his entire life. We both grew up in Mishawaka. Our mother still lives there. Ed graduated from Mishawaka High School and was applying for community college in 1995 when he experienced a psychiatric crisis that began, began a long road of treatment and transfers, which eventually led to Portage Manor 10 years later in 2005. During his 18 years at Portage Manor, he's made so many friends among residents and staff and has a girlfriend of three years. Ed and I, we're lucky, we have an extended family. But really, I feel that the people of Portage Manor are my brother's true family, his chosen family. The people who choose to work at Portage are just as special than the residents in a different way. They've answered a calling to work with unique adults who have complex needs. I trust them completely with my brother's health and his well-being. Even former staff don't let go of those connections. They really don't. County homes like Portage Manor, I've discovered, are a unique Indiana resource. You should be proud of that. It deserves to continue. I hope you will consider, reconsider the option of allowing the building to be repaired while retaining the mission and the care of these special people who cannot, will not receive the same services in traditional assisted living. It's not available there. It's only available in county homes, which are only here in Indiana. There are no open spaces in local group homes. There are not enough beds in local assisted living, especially for residents who rely on the residential care assistance program. Many residents, maybe my brother, will be sent to other parts of the state where they have absolutely no family, no friends. They've never even lived there. A shock like this can easily lead to a mental health crisis. Please don't close his home. The residents are scared and confused. Please, I hope that the supporters of Portage Manor who are here, who are not speaking, will show their support by raising their hands now. Thank you so much. I'm begging you.
Hello. I know you guys know me. Courtney Mullins, Administrator for Portage Manor, 3016 Portage Avenue. I'm speaking tonight as a citizen and not as an employee of St. Joseph County. So coming to Portage Manor is definitely a calling for myself and all of my staff. I know I speak for them when I say that. My mother was diagnosed with schizophrenia and bipolar disorder. I spent my life visiting her in state hospital, prison, locked unit at Oaklawn, until ultimately she passed away from a drug overdose. We did not know that a place like Portage Manor existed when she was still alive. Now that I have worked there, it would have been, it would have been an opportunity to possibly save her life. I know now, serving the residents, that we do save lives, and we've been saving lives for over 100 years at this point. So what I want to urge you to think about today is, I don't care about the bricks of the building. I genuinely don't. I don't care about how the mission of Portage Manor continues, only that there is an opportunity for this mission to continue, and that we can continue to serve residents. Whether that is with Dr. Atala, or if somebody else steps forward, I would like the mission to remain. Removing the mission from the, from our community is going to have effects that ripple throughout. So Dr. Atala, I met with her on Friday. She's very well-respected in this community, and I, I think she deserves a fair look at the facility and whatever it is that she might want to do with it. I do, however, believe the county has absolutely no business continuing to run the facility. The state that the facility is in now, this did not happen over two years, five years, or even 10 years. There is major, major infrastructure that needs to be invested in. There are capital projects that absolutely have to be funded. And so my plea to you is, if the county is not going to do this, please allow Dr. Atala or somebody else. But I also urge the county to no longer continue the operations of Portage Manor, ultimately. Thank you. If anyone is listening right now on Zoom or in this room that runs a healthcare facility, works at a healthcare facility, you would only be so lucky to be able to serve our residents. So if it comes time where our residents have to be moved out, please understand, these people are not people are not violent. They're not terrible residents. These are good people. And it would be a privilege for you to serve them.
Hi, my name is Danielle Peak, address 3016 Portage Avenue. I am the Social Services Director for Portage Manor. So I work day in and I work day out with all 101 residents. I see them at their best and I see them at their worst. They come to me for everything and everything in between. And every single day, I choose to be their advocate and stand by them. Today is no different. I apologize. Each and every resident offers a unique perspective and has intrinsic value. It seems as if their value is not seen by all of those on the county council or the commissioners. A little bit of background about me. So I grew up extremely poor in Chicago, as well as worked at Westville Correctional Facility with the super max, well, actually from minimum to super max clients there. I have seen those with mental illness end up homeless and prisons and dead, including my own family. I have also seen them thrive and accomplish goals that raise their independence and self-esteem. You can literally see them glowing. For example, one of our residents that spoke earlier has been able to take steps without her walker because of the physical therapy we have provided her. So all of this happens when we invest in those that others have given up on. I can personally say that if we had more places like Portage Manor, we'd see a lot of less people struggling on the streets and battling their mental illnesses alone. I would guarantee almost every single person in this room has a mental illness. And we would not want someone else to give up on us. We should not give up on them. Portage Manor serves a purpose in our community and is vital to all. All in all, we have to remember, we can always get more money, but we cannot always save those that we cast away. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julie Chini. I am currently employed by St. Joseph County as Assistant to the Director of Social Services. I reside at 1430 Fort Street in Niles, Michigan, a resident of Marion County. However, prior to my marriage, I was a resident of St. Joe County my whole life. I spent my entire childhood with being raised by my grandmother in South Bend on Ironwood, with my mother spending the majority of her time in state and county homes throughout Indiana due to her mental illness. It seems that I have a lot of family here that I didn't really realize because we are all one family and Portage Manor is one family. I lost my mother last March 18th, but on November 30th, I was blessed to take a job as Assistant to the Social Director. I can't believe this. I made a phone call. So it has been my honor to serve the residents. And the majority of our employees have absolutely no intention of leaving Portage Manor, no matter what. We all love the residents. We have no intention of fear of losing our job if Portage Manor closes. We are here for the residents. It's just amazing the amount of love that you can have for people you didn't spend your life with, but you just instantly are connected to these people. They're just amazing, amazing people. And a lot of the things that I have written here, a lot of people have already spoken to that they don't have any family. A lot of them, many of them, don't have family. The residents are their family. The staff are their family, something I didn't understand when my mother was alive. But I kind of speak right now as a devout Christian. It comes down to right and wrong. And the proposed closing of Portage Manor, isn't St. Joe doing the right thing like opening doors to the needy and underprivileged? We are closing them and saying it's not our problem. We answer to God. And if you're in favor of right to life but in favor of closing Portage Manor, I say to you that Portage Manor has 100-plus lives that absolutely matter. These people matter. These lives matter. If we uproot them, it's not rehoming them. It's taking them from their family. And they are my family and I will too advocate for them. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Matt Costello, 120 North Notre Dame Avenue in South Bend. I'm Director of Logan's Protective Services. We are a guardian currently of four people who have lived happily at Portage Manor for decades. Since I started at Logan's 34 years ago, we've placed a very rough estimate, 30 of our clients there. It's not an exaggeration to say that each one of them was in a bad predicament before we got them there. They were either being exploited, abused, neglected, homeless, or living in squalor, unable to manage their household financial or medical affairs. We've always been able to get someone into Portage within a couple of days. Problem solved. Where will our future vulnerable clients go if it closes? Indiana does have good options for folks with intellectual disabilities, group homes and Medicaid waiver services, but the waiting list is years long. They have no emergency placement options. Thank goodness for Portage Manor. Please explore the idea of rehabbing one of the wings at a time while making some of the rooms Medicaid waiver eligible. Please try to make it attractive for a private agency to take over. Certainly an increase in state reimbursement rate is well past due. Most folks at Portage Manor long for this solution. Our ward, Henry, who is now totally blind, has an intellectual disability and is very frightened of going to new places and interacting with new people, would wish as much as anybody to be able to stay at Portage. Please don't close the building and then close your eyes as to what will happen to these folks. Most of the people at Portage are there because there was no place else to go. Maybe a few elderly folks can be well-placed in nursing homes. Maybe some more can succeed in assisted living. The handful of DD folks can be served in waivers or group homes, except for emergent crises. Those folks should be okay. But what about the many younger folks with chronic mental illnesses? The geriatric providers probably don't want them or will they know what to do with them. Oaklawn says their group homes are only for short-term cases. And in any case, they don't have very many openings. And what about people with traumatic brain injuries? Except for those with skilled nursing home needs, my only suggestion over the years has been to try Portage. Portage has served a unique niche for otherwise hard-to-place people. Certainly, certainly don't close it before we get the chance, as we, as a community, as professionals, with you at the county government, as partners, to come up with willing providers, new types of programs, like long-term group homes and for people with mental illnesses. We need to copy programs like Byron Health. We've got to brainstorm, form a task force. I'll serve on it.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for the time.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
Could you restate your name and your occupation?
Yes, I'm Matt Costello. I'm the Director of Logan's Protective Services in South Bend.
And I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly. Did you make the statement as far as if Portage Manor is closed and the residents have to be relocated? Did you make the statement that said some of these facilities just have short-term cases, short-term ability for admission? Did you say that?
Yeah, my understanding-
If they're going to be relocated. And also, wait a minute, also, I'm sorry, sir. Also, did you say as far as other locations, there are extremely, extremely long waiting lists to get in?
There's a very long waiting list for people with developmental disabilities, for them to be on the, for those folks to get into nice group homes and waivers circumstance. They might be, because if Portage Manor does close, they might be put on an emergency list, which could bump them up for, I don't know. I had a woman who was six months waiting for an emergency placement. She was six months in the hospital, even though she had no medical reason to be there.
Okay, that was the third point I wanted to address. You did say that there are no or very limited emergency alternatives?
There are for, there are very few. I can speak best to the field of developmental disabilities, intellectual disabilities. But the state of Indiana, the Bureau of Developmental Disabilities, has no emergency placement housing.
Okay. From my perspective, you just made three extremely important points that really haven't been discussed. All I've heard is if it does close, then there'll be alternative housing.
Right.
And from what you're saying, it's just not that simple.
Well, yes, I can, and then even to address your question about the short-term placements, my understanding from Cindy Schultz at Oaklawn is that they have group homes, yes, but there are very few openings. And they're not designed for people with long-term mental health care needs, like the people at Portage Manor. Those are short-term placements and those people are going to be expected to move out into apartments and with only the help of a case manager, not with the kind of, you know-
24-hour care.
Nursing, laundry, meals, all the things that those people need.
I just wanted to make sure I understood you correctly because I'll say it one more time. All I've been hearing is if it closes, then they'll be relocated. And from what you're saying, it's just not that simple.
I've been trying to find placements for people my whole career and it's very difficult to find placements for these kind of people at Portage Manor.
Thank you.
Can I interject one question, please?
Yes.
Yes, sir. So would you say that based on your specialty-
Yes.
That you would probably not have an entire picture of every person at Portage Manor and the folks at Byron Medical Services might have a better idea as far as placement ability?
I don't, I don't know. My colleague, what I could say is that my colleague, Lakeisha Drake, went down to Byron on Tuesday of this week and was very impressed with their services and that perhaps to try to, you know, task to, as a community with you as partners, try to figure out if this, if Portage Manor can't stay open, if that kind of model is something that could be emulated here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Clara Ross, 1602 South Michigan Street. I come to you with a different aspect than a lot of the pro people here. I come to you as an advocate for the homeless. I also come to you as a former employee of Portage Manor. With the combination of information that I know, I also know that people have come to you with heartfelt interpretations of Portage Manor. I'm coming to you with numbers. Okay, Portage Manor, the oldest person has been there 41 years. Of the 101 people who've been there, they've been there in a combination of years, 1,221 years. The average is 12 years. Another point I would like to point out to you is the cost of the homeless is $30,000 a year per person. If each person was then become homeless from Portage Manor, that'd be $300,300. Another facility has been dedicated to those with mental health crisis and has a police presence. In the first year, over 400 police calls in the first year. They also had 200 ambulance calls in the first year. Portage Manor has less than double digits in one year of police calls. And every police, and every ambulance call they had has had to be medically, a medical reason. As compared to the other place, it was because there was a drug overdose. I also want to point out, these residents are not only medically fragile, but innocent and a product of homes, the home created by Portage Manor. As a former employee of Portage Manor, I see the perfect model Portage Manor exhibits. It should be imitated and simulated. Also, I would like to express my assistance, that I was Assistant to the Mission Director. It was nothing to receive 10 to five requests a month to the facility. So if you add that up, that is 60 requests a year. Now, that's just one year. Now, if you add all that up and you close down the other facilities that include the homeless or anything with mental health crisis, those numbers will be way exceeding what I just quoted you two. Now, I'm saying this to you for this. Portage Manor is perfect within itself. It's self-sustaining as far as what it does for the residents. What the employees do is perfect for the residents. There's no police calls. It's sustainable within itself. So why would you want to take apart or eliminate something that is perfect? And that's all I have to say. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Craig Holber McDonald, 6223 Winslow Court. My sister Melissa is a resident there. She calls it home. She's been there for eight years. As you just see, she just helped her roommate to the bathroom. This is family. All right? I'm not going to beat a dead horse on all this stuff, but I do know that my sister went through this in California. They shut her facility down for the next six years. She ran a cycle, hospital, streets, jail, streets, hospital, facility, hospital, jail. It happens. It's going to happen. She's the type that slips through the cracks. She's not old enough to be in a nursing home. She doesn't get the facility care that she needs for her mental illness, so she ends up on the streets. Costs us money. Not to mention, I had to go find her. Took me three years to find her. All right? When I moved her here after my mom died, Portage Manor was the only facility in this area that took her, that was able to take care of her. If you close this place, you are just about to put at least five people that I know straight through the cracks to the homeless shelters, to the parks, to the hospital, to jail. So come on, let's just slow our roll a little bit on this. Let the community get behind this. Let us get some input in and we can make this thing happen. Portage Manor is truly a gem in your community. So I'm confused. I guess I'm confused with the amount of mental health problems that we're having as a whole in our nation. Why would we be closing a place like this down? It should be expanded. It should be tripled because guess what? There's going to be a lot more on the streets, not just from Portage Manor, but there's a lot of them out there right now. Where do they go? They don't go anywhere. They go to jail. They go to the hospital. They go to the parks. So we need to think about this, guys. I understand it's not your family member and I understand you guys don't need to be in this business. Get it 100%. Get the hell out. I'm fine with that. But let's get it to somebody that wants to take care of these people because that's what we all want to do, is take care of each other. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Good evening. Trina Robinson, 914 Ligon Way West, NAACP president. Each of you have a letter and even the commissioners have a letter that I emailed to you, but I want to read this letter for the public, for the record. As the oldest civil rights organization in America, our mission is to achieve equity, political rights, and social inclusion by advancing policies and practice that expand human and civil rights, eliminate discrimination, and accelerate the well-being, education, and economic security of Black people and all persons of color. We are writing this letter with concerns regarding the proposed closing of Portage Manor. Portage Manor is one of a handful of facilities around the country that serves the individuals that need it most and often fall through the cracks. An article in the South Bend Tribune dated July 19, 2022, it states that homelessness in St. Joseph County dropped 9%, but incidence of mental illness worsens. The article states that Black residents continue to be at an enormous risk of homelessness in the country, state, and nation. While Black people comprise just 14% of St. Joseph County residents, they represent 40% of the people experiencing homelessness. This is extremely alarming for the NAACP. Closing of Portage Manor would further exacerbate our homeless population because the majority of the residents suffer from mental illness and are unable to function independently. It has often been stated that the residents of Portage Manor are often too young to qualify for assisted living or have disabilities that would not be manageable in an assisted living settings. It has been mentioned that the taxpayers wanted to spend less in taxes and by closing Portage Manor, taxpayers would pay less. Portage Manor, taxpayers would pay less. Well, the truth of the matter is local taxes have not supported Portage Manor in the past forty-plus years. I have been informed that all costs to run Portage Manor has been and is paid out of the resident's social security disability and/or state program called RCAP, which is a residential care assistance program. All expenses include employees' wages, insurance, FICA, PERF, food supplies, building maintenance, transportation for the residents, utilities, et cetera, and had been paid by the residence room and board fee. The NAACP has heard from relatives of family members residing at Portage Manor, and we are hearing a different narrative than what is being conveyed to the community by the county council. I would be interested in knowing if there was any community outreach forums before decision to potentially close Portage Manor was held, and to what extent has the family of the residents had a voice in this decision. The NAACP is willing to rally the community together until we get to the root cause of this sudden decision. We will be reaching out.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you.
Okay. But housing is a civil rights issue, and we are prepared to protect the rights of the residents of Portage Manor.
Hi, my name is Sarah Rispenda. I live at 622 North Quilor Drive, South Bend. I'm a nurse, a psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner. I've worked in mental health for over a decade. During that time, I have worked closely with Portage Manor. It's an underappreciated resource for this community. I've seen incredible transformations over the years, people who have previously struggled just to survive, who are in and out of the hospital, and they've been stabilized at Portage Manor. One of the most important factors in creating stability and promoting mental health is continuity of care. It is important for all patients, but even more critical for those with serious mental illness and chronic medical conditions. Structure, routine, consistency, whether that's with staff, schedule, medication administration, this all creates stability, and it's something that Portage Manor does incredibly well. At the same time, sudden changes or disruptions can be very destabilizing, exacerbate anxiety, and worsen symptoms that were previously under good control. Communicating the closure of the facility, one that many residents have called home for over twenty-plus years, is something that should have been done with great care and compassion. Instead, the entire community was blindsided by the announcement on February seventh, and since then, the county leadership has obfuscated the decision-making process, given misleading information to the public, and created confusion. This whole process has been mishandled, and frankly, with callous disregard for the well-being of residents. They deserved better. I encourage the council to delay the resolution and take time to evaluate Dr. Attala's plan so that these residents can keep their home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Olivia Dukach. I live at 513 Sky Valley Court. I am daughter, I'm a daughter of a former nurse, Chris Burkowski. She worked at Portage Manor for eleven years. Many of the residents and employees knew me as Ms. O, or Ms. Olivia, or Liv. When I heard about Portage Manor, I was pretty upset. The first thing I had thought of was where will all the residents go? Will you ensure that everybody will get a roof over their head and food and a nice blanket, a coat, make sure that they are warm or cooled off in the summer? I just want you to remember that they're human, too. They have friends at Portage Manor, and as it was stated, that they are, have all become family. I would also like you to put yourself in their shoes. How would you feel if your only home, your friends, and your safe place is just being ripped away from you? They sit afraid in their rooms, thinking they won't see their friends again, and they won't have a good home to be able to go back to. I've got a lot of memories at Portage Manor. I have basically grown up there. I remember a resident, Dennis Cole, he would make the best costumes for the Halloween parties. He used recycled plastic, and some of his hats even moved. I remember Bob or Robert Gronkowski, he treated me like his granddaughter. He would give me cards for my birthdays and maybe Christmas cards. The fundraisers at Portage Manor that were held were so full of life. I used to help with the tie dye, and the residents would tell me their stories and sometimes their favorite colors. If you let Portage Manor stay open, these people can keep their homes and continue seeing their friends and keep living their lives. They can't do that if you get in the way. So please consider keeping their homes open. Thank you for your time.
Chris Burkowski, 513 Sky Valley Court, Osceola, Indiana. That kid's mom. Good evening, council members. I've had the pleasure of meeting most of you and speaking with most of you face-to-face. My goal here today is not to give you that emotional component of the nurse in me. My goal today is hopefully to be the voice for the residents who are unable to come today or don't know the words to say. Someone asked, why now are we having and asking for community support? As someone else has said this evening, family members and residents, they were told not to worry. We're not closing. We're gonna be okay. So that is why now there is such an uproar with the sudden decision of the commissioners in closing. I applaud Dr. Attala for coming forward. I believe that she understands what Portage Manor stands for, what is needed. She has the background. Running and assisted living is not the same as hospital regulations. It's not the same as skilled nursing facility regulations. So I don't think we can compare apples to apples, apples to oranges. And I don't think Byron is the answer. I don't think Byron is the exact experts. Have you, have heard from all of our community members that has taken a village to take care of this community? Everyone from Oaklawn to Logan, to people in the community donating their time and their I don't think it takes an expert either to close down the building. Don't think you need to be an expert in art cap or Medicaid waiver or Medicare or in private pay. All these things changes as quickly as we all change our underwear. Nothing stays the same in medical, in the medical profession. So again, I'm not asking you to be experts. I'm asking you to please just slow down, let the community members speak, let community members come together to try to find a solution that will best fit all of these residents, because it certainly does take a village. And no one person is that village. And it doesn't have to be just Byron taking one million dollars to do it. Let the community help serve those that we've already been serving for a hundred and fifteen years. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christine Galvis, 17837 Bridgeview Drive, and I have absolutely nothing to do with Portage Manor. I don't know the residents there or anything. But I do not feel Portage Manor should be shut down. I'm asking you to please do not provide the three million dollars in the funds to begin the closure of Portage Manor. Apply the money to something that will help the residents stay in their home. Please don't start this process of closing the place down. That three million dollars can go to help a doctor here who wants to buy Portage Manor. Help her out. When we talk about Portage Manor, we have to look at it as two different parts. First, the residents are the most important and should be able to reside in their home without the fear of being moved to a place that is not familiar to each of them. Put yourself in the place of the residents, as other people here have asked you that. Or what if your son or daughter live there? What in the hell would you do? How would you feel? You are negatively affecting the people with a mental disability and pulling them out of their safe, secure surroundings. What if one of the residents land upon the street and are harmed because of your heartless decisions? Now, I have a problem. I've been standing back there, and I have seen people pull out their phones as council members, working on paperwork, and having side conversations. I think you should be listening to everybody that's been talking instead of doing side things. Second, the Portage Manor building is a historical landmark and an architectural gem that everyone admires as they pass that place. The proper thing to do is to keep it as a residential facility for the mentally challenged. The building has been ignored for years. How would your houses look if you didn't maintain it properly for years? If you decided after twenty years to start doing something, you'd probably do the most important thing, and that would be the roofer, make sure nothing's leaking. You have a chance to rectify the previous administration's mistakes or inaction by finding a way to keep that facility open. Or has shutting the building and selling the property been all of the previous commissioners' goals for years? I want to know that. Please find a way to save Portage Manor residence home and save the historical building. Make it a jewel in South Bend and something we can all be proud of and not hang our heads in shame because you shut the building and displaced a hundred people. Just last week or two weeks ago, there was something about the chamber, about getting businesses involved. They had a speaker. Get your businesses involved. There's something else to be done with this facility instead of just shutting it down. Thank you.
My name is Rodney Gadsden. I'm president and CEO of the South Bend Tenant Association. I live at 734 South Clearview Place, South Bend, Indiana. I heard every conversation, half my voice been taken by the people that elegantly spoke on their behalf. I have, for four years, my organization have been working for tenants of all manners, from the elderly to the eighteen-year-olds. I have displaced four sets of homes. Rabbi Schuman Place, Rostrum Manor, Miami Hills. And the thing that disturbed me in breaking up a community is this, that the people have a problem. We don't like the peace. The process is supposed to solve the problem, the laws, the process, but the politics destroys it. And at times, we ask people to have patience. Okay, don't you think these people back here suffered enough? Because if that's the case, then you're moving tenants away from their home, out of their community, out of their family. Our model is home is the starting place, because home is the starting place. That's where they started from, and probably that's where they'll end up at. It's the cheapest place in all of Indiana to live at. I had to move my mother from South Bend, Indiana, to go live in Westville. Why? Because, she has dementia, she can't afford to live up here. It's almost four to five thousand dollars to live up here. It's only around fifteen hundred dollars to keep Portage Manor open. Why would you get rid of a valued resource and then a person that want the help, that want to reconstruct? Now, here's some things. The county, there's a lack of transparency, a lack of oversight on all these things that happen. Let's just call the truth for truth. Let's put the elephant in the room, shall we? No pun intended. Just saying to this is this. Why in God's name, here it goes, why in God's name would you even have a proposal without an exit strategy? Okay, kick them out. Kick them out. Did you consider where they're gonna go? Did you consider the cost? You know, the ambulance, that costs money. Hospitals, that costs money. The police department, that costs money. And I'm a taxpayer. I'm already inundated with money being from education and et cetera. So why can't we use our resources properly? Mitchell Walker, we could have moved them to Mitchell Walker, because at the end of the day, it's gonna be your vote, five to four or two to one. Now, here's, that's the elephant in the room. But here we go.
Sir?
What do we do and where do we go? Hey, I understand. Don't shout my voice. I'll leave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pastor Kenneth Lee. I am, my residence is nineteen twenty-nine North Huey Street, and I am the first district councilman for the city of South Bend where Portage Manor is. I'm here today to speak to you about a decision that will impact the lives of some of the most vulnerable members of our community, closure of Portage Manor in South Bend. This decision will not only displace the residents who call this facility home, but it also will have far-reaching consequences for their families and caregivers. First and foremost, it is important to recognize that the residents of Portage Manor are people. They are people who require specialized care and support, and they may have physical disabilities or cognitive impairments, or other conditions that require constant attention and care. These individuals have made Portage Manor their home, and it is incumbent upon us as a community to ensure that they continue to receive the care they need. The closure of Portage Manor will not only disrupt the lives of these residents, but it will also have a ripple effect on their families and caregivers. Many of these families have entrusted their loved ones to the care of Portage Manor, and they will now have to scramble to find alternative care options. This is a difficult and an emotional taxing process, especially for those who may not have the resources or support system in place to navigate such a transition. Furthermore, the closure of Portage Manor will result in displacement of dozens of healthcare workers who have dedicated themselves to caring for these residents. These individuals have formed relationships with the residents, and their departure will undoubtedly have a negative impact on the quality of care provided to these vulnerable individuals. As a first district city councilman and as a pastor in the area, I urge our county leaders to reconsider the closure of Portage Manor and to explore alternative options for ensuring that the residents receive the care and support they need. We have a responsibility to protect and care for those who are most vulnerable among us, and it is only by working together that we can achieve this goal. Mark is a young man, Mark that spoke earlier. He would come to my Bible studies and hear me teach Bible study and go back to Portage Manor and teach it to the residents there. So I know that he's been there for thirty-three years, and I'm here in support of Mark and in support of Portage Manor. Please, let's, let's think about this, and let's find an alternative. Thank you.
Counsel, I'm Jason Quichlal. I'm the trustee of Portage Township with offices on one thirty-three, at one thirty-three North William in downtown South Bend, and I reside at two twenty-one Marquette in South Bend. Thank you, Councilman Root and the council, for the opportunity to speak today. I just came to say that, and I sent an email earlier, earlier today, saying something similar. I have found that, I'm also here to ask that you delay your decision on Portage Manor. I've found that the community is often very forgiving and understanding of a decision, even when it's unpopular. If they feel like the public has been involved, and that there's been proper discourse, and there's been proper due diligence involved in that decision, I've found that very often, even if it's unpopular, they'll accept it. And I think the sense that we're getting out there is they just don't feel like we're quite at that point yet. And just in these past couple of weeks, as I've been following this issue, and we've seen some interesting and creative proposals coming out of the community. And I don't profess to be an expert in this by any means, but it seems like those proposals deserve, deserve a look at. They deserve time. They deserve our due diligence. This is an agency that's been serving our community for well over a hundred years. A couple more months certainly doesn't seem like it would hurt anything. And what I can tell you is, again, I don't profess to be an expert, but as the Portage Township trustee, the mission of our office is to provide assistance to those who are facing hardship. That's what we do, all day and every day, those who need help the most. The mission of Portage Manor seems to fit very well within the mission of Portage Township. So as trustee, I can commit to you, I'd be more than happy to take part in those discussions, either with Dr. Attala or other community agencies, real services, Logan Center, tons of amazing individuals in this community that can come together and come up with possibly some solutions. You may end up coming to the same conclusion that you've come to already, that the county commissioners are recommending, but at least we can say we did the due diligence. But I'm here to tell you that I'm ready and willing to be a partner in that. I can make that commitment to you. I don't know what that would look like, but if I'm invited to the table, if I'm invited to that conversation, I'm sure as hell gonna show up, because I think it's important. I stand with the residents of Portage Manor today. I ask that you do the same. I ask you to delay your vote today. Thank you.
Brooke White, 228 East Ninth Street. I stand here as someone who had the privilege to get to know the individuals at Portage Manor. It's truly heartbreaking to see how the elected officials have currently handled this whole situation, voting to close a building, rushing to inform the residents, and pushing through contracts to get this done without truly taking the time and consideration to make a plan. to get this done without truly taking the time and consideration to make a plan and look into other viable options. The residents of this building, at the least, deserved that. Instead, they have been left with fear, sadness, and uncertainty. One of the residents stated to me, "We had the same people who sat in front of us promising a new, promising us a new building a year ago, sit in front of us and tell us to trust that they will find somewhere for us to go." The golden rule in life is to do to others as you would have done unto yourself. I think we can all say in this room that what's being done to these residents and potentially being done to these residents, none of us would want done to us. This has been a rushed process and the community is asking why? Why have we only looked at a few years of numbers? Why are we not discussing and truly allowing some of the time for these possibilities of private owners? In a short time, we've already had interest. So many questions and so little answers. Looking at this rush process, it's really hard for us to not feel like there's an agenda here. And that the residents are just, they're just a disposable part of getting to this end goal. As someone who is a resident of this county, who has grown to love these residents, who's became a family member of Portage Manor, who's cried with them in the last few weeks, who's hugged them more times than I've probably hugged people in my life because I'm not a hugger, it's an uneasy feeling. Because if you'll do this to a hundred of one residents in our community, what are you going to do to the rest of us? Currently, it feels like we're fighting against the people that we voted to support us. And so I just stand before you today and I ask you guys, are you going to hold up your vow to follow the voters' will? Because we are all here and we have spoken in numbers that we support Portage Manor. We want this building to stay open. Thank you.
Good evening. Mike McManus, five-one-nine-four-zero, Lilac Road. As I've sat here this evening, the biggest question that's entered into my mind is, where did my country go? Where did Americans go? Americans who say repeatedly, "We are a unique country. We are the best country. We are better than anyone else." I'm old enough to remember and actually still feel the fear of polio. But American science and ingenuity through Dr. Jonas Salk found a vaccine and America has eradicated polio most of the way from this country and around the world. I remember when I was nineteen years old, when people said, "Oh, it could never be done." I remember, and I'm sure most of you remember, sitting around your television as Neil Armstrong stepped onto the face of the moon. That was my America. That was the America that stood up to huge challenges and defended and defeated them. I'm in your district, Mr. Thomas. I hope you have the courage to stand up and do the right thing for these residents. There is no rush. It has not been thought through. Please, show that we are a unique people, right here in St. Joseph County. That we do have the heart, the compassion, because we certainly, if we can fix up that lobby downstairs, we have the resources to do what is right for those who cannot do it for themselves. Thank you.
Good evening. Kevin Conry, five-one-two-nine-one, Hidden Pines Court. Listened to a lot of great dialogue tonight from all these residents. Lived in South Bend all my life. Portage Manor's been close to me where I grew up in the neighborhood. I explained this a little bit last week to the commissioners. Quick story, I went to University College in St. Joe, St. Joe College in Rensselaer, Indiana. It was mismanaged by the trustees, therefore that college is closed now. Displaced fifteen hundred students, Division II athletics. It's no longer because it was mismanaged. This facility out on Portage Avenue has been mismanaged by St. Joe County for a hundred years. A hundred years, the place has been declining. I'm not blaming this on the new commissioners. I'm not blaming this on the new council members. But you have a duty as elected officials to put all the community effort to make sure that this place stays open. I want to understand and I want the commissioners to explain to me and to the public and to everyone on this system, why? What's the underlying problem? Is it money? Is it the property? What is it? There's a lot of resources that we have. I work for Ideal Consolidated, mechanical contractor, Martel Electric. We just did a community, the Unity Gardens out on Ardmore Trail. The lady came to us. We went to the building trades. We gathered around each other and we helped build this facility where she didn't have to spend the money. They plant vegetables for the community, for the homeless. We got forth the effort from the local, from locals, Local one fifty-three, Local one seventy-two, plumbers and pipe fitters. We came together as a coalition. Jason Critchlow just stood in front of you and said that he would stand, go on a committee. I would stand next to him on that committee. And I'm sure there's a lot of other people in this town that would do the same thing. I encourage you to table this. This is, it's happening way too soon. We have four new elected officials on this council. I was told before I even got here that it's already done, five to four vote. I hope that's not the case. I hope that you table this. And I would have liked to heard the pros versus, or the cons versus the pros first. Nobody even, nobody even verified that in the beginning when the, not when the motion was made. I, if it's all about money for the county, donate the building to the doctor for a dollar. Walk away from it. Walk away. Walk away. Help subsidize. It's already come up with two-point-seven million dollars that they've already put together. That two-point-seven million can help that building. We could put bathrooms in the corridors. There's a lot of things that can be done there. I encourage you to table it. Thank you for your time.
Christopher Davis, thirteen thirty-seven O'Brien. I speak on behalf of Bobby Anderson. I've heard a lot of things, a lot of things. Most things I heard was that the place that you're talking about closing, it's been there longer than you've been living. One, what it's been doing has been there longer than you've been trying to be in this office. Two, what has not been said is that we don't want to close this. Nobody's saying we don't want to close this. Everybody's saying, "Well, the reason we need to close it is because it costs the county too much money." If you wanted to sell something in South Bend, you would give it to them for a dollar, like the man said, "Give it to the doctor." Let us and you help us get something done, other than next year when I look, hear you knocking on my door talking about vote, I really don't want to be you. Yeah, because all I can think about is that you're taking mentally ill people and shutting them down. You're sending them out there, "We are the state of in God we trust." You can't say that and not do it. You know, you are individuals who are in a state that needs to make it right. Mental health, we got the biggest problem in the United States. Why not be one of the only counties in the state of Indiana that can help mental health? How many residents, you know, everybody's visited there. Do you know how many beds are in that place? Council members?
Hundred forty-four or so.
No. That's forty-four what? To each wing?
Hundred, one hundred and forty-four. Potential beds.
Oh, and if you had them all filled, that would cost us what? Nothing. Because remember, it's all being paid by federal money if there's beds in there. You're going to take three million to move these people, take three million to fix that and we don't have to worry about it ever again because you solved the problem and made it a headache. Instead of solutions, finding and saying, "Well, somebody wants to build affordable housing." We don't have affordable housing in South Bend! Stop wondering about it. It's not as easy, it's not that hard. We don't have it. You can't take affordable housing and give it to half of the people. My kids take pills every day to go to school. Why? Because of the affordable housing I moved there. It's lead poisoning. Every kid in this state and in this city has gone to school, it has to take something. But they will down the road if I take them off his medicine. Have to be part of that mental health problem. Let's solve the problem. Don't become a part of it. Thank you.
Robin Chaloner, two-five-six-one-two, Shorewood Court. And I am exhausted, exhausted. Everything everyone has said here has been over and over and over again. And Steve, you've sat through meeting year after year and me begging for budgets that could support the renovations that are needed to increase the per diem, which Mike Mish is very much aware of. In fact, he sent me flowers when I first got my job. You wouldn't believe that today, but he did. Mike, or John Murphy, you know too, that we had a good plan and there is a renovation that can be done. I would love to see it stay as a county private partnership. I think it could benefit the county. It offsets the cost of group health insurance. We pay our, our fair share. So I don't, I don't understand what the issue is and basically I'm just here to be a voice for the residents that cannot be here. You saw some residents who are able to come up and speak, some residents cannot. Some of them don't even know what's happening. They don't even know what's happening. They can't even comprehend what is going on. To move them also to Byron Center, or if that's an option, I had a reporter saying, "Well, if they don't have family," because I said, "Well, we're their family." Well, then what does it matter if we move them to Fort Wayne? They don't have family. This is their family, this is their community. Why is that an option? Like, they're not dogs, we're not going to rehouse them. It's just the, it's disgusting. And year after year, Steve, you've sat here and collected from, from our taxes, out of our local dollars and put these agendas. When I hear new council members saying the same regurgitated message that you've said year after year, "We're getting out of the county home business," when this is a gem in our county, we should be proud of this and you should have invested in this a long time ago and shame on you. Shame on you for getting in the ear of all these elected officials or people with big checkbooks, obviously not me, and have pushed this agenda. Things that you said about me too, personally. And to put even Courtney in the middle of this and myself and put us in a building and taking care of disabled people without the means to do so is unfair. And we showed up every day and did it relentlessly because we love those people and we did the best we can with nothing. And you gave nothing. With ARP funds, you gave three million to hotels for now, you gave us nothing. I wrote grants for ARP money. You gave more since I left, but when I was there, I was begging for help. I could get nothing and I had our county attorney on my board and I could get nothing for these people. So tell me, what is going on? Don't give Dr. Atala a dollar. Give her three million to do the work that she is competent to do and to take care of the most vulnerable in our county.
Robin? Robin? I wanted to ask, Robin?
Robin, would you take a question from Councilman Shetzel, please?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. Are you currently the administrator of facility?
I am.
Okay, what's the name of that facility?
I don't think I need to disclose that.
Okay. Does that facility, are you, you know, we have, I understand some residents have already left Portage Manor. Have some of those residents come to your facility?
No.
None of them have come to your facility?
None.
None at all. Do you, would your facility be appropriate for any of the residents?
I would love the opportunity and so would this entire community to have that conversation, but instead we've been sidestepped by Byron Health and out of town.
Well, I'm just asking you the question.
Company, yeah, I'm answering it. We would love, our community would love the opportunity. I have talked to my vice president of operations and our CFO and they have very serious ideas of how we could partner. I've even reached out to the state, to Lauren Perry, to, because I know that I'm not going to get any money from, from this, this group to actually help people. So I asked the state, "Would you give me three hundred thousand to renovate an open area?" That, you know, when I got this job, I said, "Lord, why'd you give me this big empty building?" Because they're doing a renovation there. So if we could get three hundred million dollars, we, not three hundred million, I'm sorry, three hundred thousand dollars, we could renovate a space that could potentially house fifty-nine people and that would be sixteen memory care beds, that would be Medicaid waiver.
But it's not, but it's not currently. Currently, you couldn't take any?
Currently, I could take about, well, I won't say how many I can take, but currently, yes, I can house some in an area that's already done. I'm talking about two floors at where I work that are vacated right now because we're doing a capital project there.
So currently, you could house a number you won't tell us appropriately?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Cameron Chaloner, two-five-six-one-two, Shorewood Court. Robin Chaloner is my mom. I grew up at Portage Manor, basically. She worked there my whole life. She has her heart on her sleeve for those people. She loves those people so much. I worked at Portage Manor for a year. I worked in dietary and I worked as the activity director for a little over a year. I have the same passion for those people. I love those people with my whole heart. I'm absolutely disgusted with how the county has treated the residents, has lied to the public, deceived the public, and how you've treated my mom. This is horrible, okay? I just ask today that you please take time to slow this down, to take Dr. Anella's request and fully review it. I pray that you, I pray that you truly slow this down. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm Mary K. Consella at three-zero-four-nine North Maple Hill Court, South Bend. And I've been a registered nurse all my life and went into nursing school in nineteen sixty. Of course, I had some exposure to behavioral health as a student nurse and, but it wasn't until nineteen seventy-five that I had an opportunity to work at a state mental facility in Mantino, Illinois. And at that time, I thought, wow, you know, this, this big building, big grounds, et cetera. At that time, I think the population was down to maybe fifteen hundred as opposed to seven thousand in previous years. But it was also a time when they were starting to send patients out into the community and many of them would go into empty hotels in Chicago. And I had the benefit of when they decompensated, coming back and helping them because there was nobody helping them with their ADLs, nobody helping them to see that they had medication, that they were getting the services they needed. So, you know, that's forty, what, forty-five years ago. Recently, I moved to, I moved to South Bend in seventy-seven and in the early nineties, I started working in behavioral health. The first six years were in child adolescent units. One facility out of town, but other Madison Center. And these kids had few, just, you know, mental illnesses that really would require antipsychotics, et cetera. But they came from homes that were in chaos and it was a privilege to be able to work with them. Unfortunately, Madison Center has a record of having been closed down because of some, I don't know, extortion or whatever it was, falsifying records. And, you know, I, I think that's a black mark on St. Joseph County, that, that obviously happened and continued. So I think you folks need to consider the privilege of living in St. Joseph County, having Notre Dame, having successful businesses that you having successful businesses that you can call on to help people that are in need. I don't, I haven't heard any of these residents complain about where they are. They're very thankful.
Your time is up.
But I also think you folks ought to think about other people than just what's convenient for you.
My name is Joe Walls. I live at 59845 Red Fox Court. My sister is Vicky Walls. She lives at Portage Manor. She's lived there for about 40 years now. My son spent a little time at Portage Manor. He spent some time at Epworth. Mental illness runs in my family and it's a real thing. And you cannot put these people in an assisted living facility. I ask that you please consider the proposal by the good doctor and give these people a chance to keep their home. This is where they live. It's their home. Thank you.
Good evening. Deborah Doral, 21677 Otten Road, South Bend. Thank you for taking the time to listen to all of us tonight. First of all, I want to thank those members of the council who put together a letter and sent it to Courtney. I had the privilege of touring Portage Manor and a little bit of a look at that letter. I believe that was from Mr. Tanner, Diana, Raphael, and Mark. And in my experience with working with the county entities, this is the kind of process that I would like to see more of. This is the kind of thing where people prepare ahead of time. They check into things in depth, in the background. They get together. They bring the best tools that they have together to put forward a number of potential solutions. And this is the kind of thing that I think would help across the board, a lot of the things that are going on in the county right now. So thank you. Secondly, I'm not a contractor, but I do have a design and construction background. And so I know what I'm looking at when I look at a building. And there are some real problems with that building. Some of the things that have not been said tonight is that probably all the pipes need to be replaced other than the bathrooms. I do feel that it's an accident waiting to happen and it has been neglected. I feel possibly TIF monies have been carved off instead of being used to help maintain the facility. Things like that. The lobby remodel here in this building, these are things. This is a comfortable building. We don't need a lobby remodel. So I think the historic nature of the building and the fact that it is in an almost ideal location for this kind of use. Because the other thing I wanted to bring up is that a few years ago, a facility that had all the high tech, all the certifications, all of the things that needed to have done, was trying to get located on Jefferson by Walnut Grove and really not far from Logan. And they had all the cameras and everything to keep everybody. And the community came out about in this number to complain about that small facility going in on Jefferson. And so I just wonder, like, where else could a facility like this go? It's almost in an ideal location right now. And I don't live far from there even.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny Piantek, 2201 Riverside Drive. I just want to remind everybody up here and over here that you work for us, right? You work for us. And we're not feeling that right now. I mean, you're acting like you don't. I'm 56 years old and I don't need, I don't need someone to act like my dad and tell me what's best for these people. Why should we trust you? I mean, you're one person. The paperwork that was released, it didn't have any names on it as to who did the research. And the paperwork that was released to the public was insane. It was a mess. And I'm wondering if any of you new people had a chance to read through it? Did you, did you guys have a chance? Did you? Okay. Just remember, it's us that you work for. You can't bully us. We don't appreciate it. And also, St. Paul's has not taken any people over there. But Byron has taken eight. And it just seems kind of fishy to me that people were placed before this stuff even went through. And they're being paid a ton of money to come in here and, you know, supposedly close the place down. Why are we paying them all that money? You know, if you slow down, you know, you talk about reining in the spending and you're wasting $3 million or whatever, 102, 300 million or $3 million. I mean, that doesn't make any sense to me. So, thank you.
My name is Trish Becker. Address is 217 West Crawford Street in Elkhart. My sister Vicky has been a resident at Portage Manor since 1988. I won't echo all of the family sentiments. And Mr. Wallace is my big brother. This is their home. They have to stay. You have to find a way. But just looking at the business sense of it, if Portage Manor sits on 123 acres, let's do what needs to be done to get it up to snuff, to help those residents to be an absolute shining star in northern Indiana that all states would be very jealous of. Sell 100 damn acres so the developers or whoever wants the land can have their land. I know I used to be in real estate. You have to have a minimum of 20 acres to put in a subdivision anywhere. It's a beautiful area along the St. Joe River. I'm sure, gentlemen and ladies, that you could get a beautiful pure penny for that property. But leave Portage Manor alone. It's not broken. She needs to be shined up. But it's not broken. Don't fix it if it's not broken. Or you know what I mean? Thank you for your time. I thank you for your efforts. And please, take the time that the severity of this type of an issue deserves. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, council. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlyle. I've listened to all the discussion tonight and it's heartbreaking. I had the pleasure of getting a tour of Portage Manor. Commissioner Dieter arranged it. Courtney Mullins escorted us through and showed us the good things there and she showed us the bad things. She pointed out some of the bad things. I didn't see a lot that said, tear this building down. I just did not see that. And I've heard the discussion tonight. And when I can't add up two and two, and I got two ex-wives, it'll tell you I can't. And something doesn't make sense to me. What is the elephant in the room? The elephant in the room is Magnus Capital Partners out of Grand Rapids, Michigan, who have their eyes on this property and want to develop it. And they see Portage Manor as a problem. Ignore these people. We have people that need that property. Magnus can go somewhere else. They're a company. They're used to going other places. They're used to developing new things. Don't let this be one of their new things. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Dillon and I live at 615 West Angela in South Bend. I have three questions. One, who's the owner of Portage Manor?
County Commissioners.
Okay. So if, well, I agree, I agree that ultimately, they are our employees. So yes, the people. However, the commissioners had the power to come and do this petition and are moving to sell this very valuable property, as we just heard. And I'm sorry, but despite assurances, we have no trust that these folks, who are among the most affected and most vulnerable in our community, will be properly taken care of. And on top of that, as we've heard over and over tonight, their community will be destroyed. I want to ask where our values are. Who are we as a community? If we value developers, landowners, sellers, wealthy, over the most vulnerable in our community? If you are a family member of a person who is most vulnerable, most affected, then you might get it. And my apologies if some of you do have family members who are vulnerable and affected, but I don't think you're operating with that in your mind to value those folks. They have as much worth as the richest person, not only in our community, but in this world. And their human dignity needs to be respected. And we as people are losing our values, any decent values we might have had, if we don't place their needs as important. Going back to who owns this property. If it is in such bad shape that it needs so much money to fix it up, who got it there? Who got it there? Well, ultimately, maybe the county, we, the people, didn't keep a close enough eye on. However, one could also say that you are landlords of a substandard property.
Ma'am, your time is up.
And you have not taken care of it.
Ma'am, your time is up.
And now, all of a sudden, you have gone and scared the residents out of their shoes.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you.
My last question is.
Ma'am, your time is up.
I request that the petitioner withdraw the petition.
Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to the commissioners' resolution?
Yes.
Deb, you have the floor.
If you mean Deb Lambert, my name is Deb Lambert. Address 1661 Beacon Street, Fort Wayne, Indiana. CEO and President of Byron Wellness Systems. And I'm going to lead with emotion, which is atypical for me. And then I'm going to give you facts. So from an emotional standpoint, I can't tell you how proud I am of the residents that came tonight to speak. And I am 100% in support of them. And I cannot tell you how proud I am and how proud I have been to be affiliated with the staff at Portage Manor. Because they go in there every day and they give it their all in less than ideal conditions. That's the emotional part of it. The factual part is, first of all, Byron has not taken eight residents. Byron can't take residents. We've taken two emergency move-ins because we couldn't find placement for those residents closer. So this isn't a big windfall for Byron. That's not what this is about. And I have no idea who the one speaker who said Byron's going to get a million dollars to help close the facility. Like, that's not happening. I would never take that kind of money. I have, so, many of you probably don't know who Byron is. Byron Health Center was the county home in Fort Wayne, Indiana. We too were affiliated with the commissioners. I have been the president and CEO of that organization for the last 10 years out of 11. And I was asked to come on board. And I will be honest with you. If I had any idea that a new building was not going to be built, I would not have spent my time in this project because I'm busy doing other things. I had full intention of seeing this building through. So we built a new building three years ago. And I was asked to take it to my board, to take over running of Byron Health Center, or I'm sorry, Portage Manor. But we build a new building. So we have a $25 million mortgage. We can't take on another $15 to $20 million mortgage. So we don't have the financial wherewithal to do that. I agree with Courtney's recommendation. And I have told the commissioners this on numerous times. With all due respect to the commissioners, they have no business attempting to run a healthcare facility. It needs to be run by a non-for-profit, like most county homes have kind of gone to. So those are just some things I wanted to dispel. I can also tell you, this isn't a leadership problem.
Ma'am, you have 15 seconds.
Well, okay. I sat before this county council last July and gave you guys the budget for this year. And I told you then that we weren't making enough revenue. And I went down to Indianapolis to ask for more money. I can't get more money. It's a long process to get the states to increase that. I'm on a committee to do that, but it's going to probably be too late if the vote's taken tonight to close. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any questions.
Mr. President.
But I stand in support. So if there's.
Ma'am, Councilman Shetzel has a question for you.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
You mentioned that you spoke with the previous council last summer. So clearly, this is not, this problem is not something that the previous council or the current commissioners just started addressing. Is that correct?
This facility has been losing money for the last at least 11 or 12 years substantially. With the exception of one year, I believe they made $80,000, if my memory serves.
Thank you. So for any elected official that's currently in office to pretend like this just suddenly came upon us is probably inaccurate based on what happened last summer.
I can't, yeah. I can't speak on behalf of what they found.
In your estimation, can Byron place these residents?
I can tell you that I will not allow those residents to go home with, okay? And we will work, if the decision's made to move them elsewhere. We will work to find placement. And I will tell you that we've had people, I've had people reach out to me. I know Robin said that Byron was blocking her efforts. I'm not blocking it. The final vote hasn't been made. I wasn't planning on moving anybody. So, you know, I've had people reach out from the. So, you know, I've had people reach out from the IDD population. I've had people reach out from other subgroups that will be very helpful if the decision is made to close this facility.
Okay. And one last question. Has Byron had experience helping homes like this, assisted living facilities, place residents in other assisted living facilities or other facilities? Has Byron ever helped do this before?
I have closed a facility before myself as a licensed administrator. So I'm licensed as a comprehensive care administrator, meaning both skilled care and assisted living. So I have closed a facility myself in my career. I've been doing this for 23 years.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Catantry, you have a question for Ms. Lambert?
Yeah, Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Councilmember Catantry, we met with you last July during our normal budgetary cycle, when you were the interim, you were hired as an interim administrator for Portage Manor, and you helped us with the budget for 2023. So at that point in time, we were just discussing the budget of Portage Manor, and we weren't discussing the possible closure of it at that time, I don't believe. My question to you is, you made a comment a minute ago. If our vote goes to close Portage Manor, then you won't be able to be successful downstate lobbying for more money. Is that what you did say?
No. Unfortunately, this isn't a quick process, right? So I asked permission, when I came on board last year, to go down and lobby at the state on behalf of Portage Manor to ask for more money. Because what that would, I would have to disclose financials to the folks down there that I was trying to make the case with. Unfortunately, for not only Portage Manor, but anybody in our cap, right now, we're in a hot mess with FSSA and Medicaid, because the state's going to manage Medicaid. So that's their number-one priority. So they've put the R cap, they've put reviewing the reimbursement rate on their table, and they've actually hired, ironically enough, a company out, or, yeah, a company out of Washington, DC, HMA is what they're called. And so I happen to work with someone that they're bringing, the state's bringing on board at a national level for a different reason. And so he reached out to me to get some background information. So the state is starting to work on reviewing the R cap reimbursement, because I have told them for years, it's at least $10, and with inflation right now, $15 per resident per day shy of being able to just break even.
Well, you must have done something right, because they are studying that downstate right now, and it is up for discussion in the House, Indiana House. And I've spoken to an Indiana senator who is very interested in this, and he indicates to me that there is potential for movement to get that rate up in the area that you're speaking of, in the $15 range. It's currently at $54.12 per day, per resident, but he indicates to me that they're looking more toward $67 to $70 per resident per day. But that certainly hasn't been decided yet, but they are looking at that, and they are investigating that, and maybe through your efforts and everybody else's efforts, that rate's going to be increased this session.
So I went down to Indianapolis three different times to meet with, excuse me, three different times to meet with those folks on behalf of Portage Manor. So, you know, I was all in on this project, so, and I still am. And for people in the community, if you're going to get together, I would be happy if asked to be at that seat at the table, to talk about potential solutions. If I could add any value, I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you. Happy Cat's iPhone, you're next. You have three minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Allison Minesberg. I live at 2633 Arrowhead Drive in South Bend, Indiana, which is just a few blocks from Portage Manor. I love driving and biking by that grand building. And I don't want to battle more traffic along Portage or Bendix. Portage can't be expanded. Bendix is pretty narrow, and Cleveland is packed, so there's not really room for a lot more residents that are driving cars to be in that area. I appreciate having a place that supports residents who don't drive in the area and who use public transportation, which is a help to the many residents in South Bend and the county who don't or can't drive as well, because that utility of that public transportation route helps make sure that it stays funded and stays accessible. And that's important also for teenagers in our community. We don't have a particularly bike-friendly community, and bus routes provide one way for kids to get around in this city. I have an 11-year-old, and my family has a history of mental illness. And so I love the knowledge that if my son develops a serious mental illness as he grows up, that I'd be able to keep him near me, where he could be in a dorm-like setting and have peers who share his struggles. I don't know why anyone's scared of sharing three showers with their peers in a wing of a building. I think most of us on, in the room and on our phones have probably spent a year or two doing that. I am concerned that one major problem with keeping the Manor open for current and future residents seems to be Medicaid reimbursements. I hate when we put prices on people, and that's what this seems like to me. We know Medicaid reimbursement levels for mental care are so low that it's hard to get that care, and it also seems to be hard to get the kind of care that the Portage Manor residents need. I don't know if you're aware, but they've also been closing down pediatricians' offices on the west side of South Bend. So it seems like working on Medicaid regulations is a pretty important thing to work on. And I was really excited to hear that that's what the Byron representative says has been making some progress. I mean, we know Indiana claims to be a pro-life state. We know it has poor health outcomes for moms and babies. We know that affects long-term health issues. It seems like the root cause here is those Medicaid rules that would rather put people on the street than increase reimbursements and spend a little bit more money to provide dignity for the life of people like those who rely on Portage Manor. So I hope if the state and the county is going to continue claiming this pro-life and pro-quality-of-life stance, that instead of literally selling out, they will take the time to advocate for increased Medicaid reimbursements and for repairs to this building and making sure that it stays open for those residents who are here, but also expand and takes new residents. As you heard, I believe it was Ms. Clara Ross...
Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you. Next up is Peter Augustino. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Root, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to address you. I'm doing so at a risk, perhaps, of being terminated from my position as a deputy county attorney, but I'm speaking to you as a citizen. And I'm pointing out to you that the Constitution of the United States points out that the reason that, one of the reasons that we formed this perfect union, known as the United States of America, among other things, is to promote general welfare. And I believe that keeping Portage Manor open serves that purpose. We should not measure Portage Manor by whether or not it makes money. Most government services are not meant to make money. The reason we have taxes is to pay for things that don't pay for themselves, because they're important to the community. They're important for the residents that live at Portage Manor, and they serve the purpose of general welfare. The state law allows the county council to levy specifically to fund a home such as Portage Manor. That option needs to be considered. It requires a choice to be made among council members at budget time of priorities in budgeting, but the mechanism for paying for this does exist under state law. It needs to be used. It needs to be considered. I also note that with growth and expansion in the county, there's going to be a growing tax base and a growing increase in income taxes coming into the county, particularly with the projects over in the New Carlisle area. So I think, I think pause is the better course here, and I think we need to consider the oath of upholding the Constitution, which includes promoting general welfare. I also ask Mr. Thomas, as my representative, I live in German Township, to vote to table this tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Augustino, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You have, you have a law firm, correct?
Yes, I do.
Can you describe for us what your law firm's role is in the Portage Manor process?
My partner, Mike Mish, is the county attorney. And I'll leave it to him to address his role. I know he's been on the board. I know he's advised the commissioners. So I'm...
Let me clear my, let me clarify my question. Are you speaking for yourself, or are you speaking for your law firm tonight?
I speak for myself, and I speak for my law firm. I'm not speaking for the county commissioners.
Thank you. Next up is Marla. Marla, you have the floor for three minutes.
Sorry. My name's Marla Godet. I live at 55705 Sichuan Drive in Osceola. I just want to say, as a mental health professional, one who advocates in the community for mental health awareness and responsiveness, it is very important that this be tabled. We are working with people who have severe mental illness, and I understand people saying that, well, it's been talked about, but to my ears, I have not heard it talked about to this level until just recently. And so I want to give my voice as a professional in the community and say, someone who works directly with people with mental illness, to the point where at 7:00 AM this morning, I was emailing Representative Bauer and another constituent and saying, this is beyond local help with a constituent, because her mental illness was so severe, is so severe, that she has been to four mental health facilities and two police calls, because, guess what? She doesn't know about Portage Manor. 37-year-old woman who could have possibly killed someone because she doesn't know about Portage Manor. This is urgent, you all. This is urgent. I am speaking to you professionally, and I'm speaking to you personally. We have got to slow this down. And if it's about money, there are organizations that lose money all the time, and we keep them open. There are companies and businesses that lose money all the time. And to my new council members to run in and jump in, there's a thing called confluence. And sometimes with confluence, you have to get in and figure out the lay of the land and not already have your plans made, because you don't want to appear to be in the situations where it says, "For the love of money is the root of all evil, which while some covet after, they have erred from the faith and pierced themselves through with many sorrows." That's First Timothy.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Who?
There's someone in my home who is on the phone.
Thank you. Roy, you have three minutes to address the council.
Roy signs 426 South Mead Street. I am a power of attorney for my uncle, who is a resident at Portage Manor. Thank you for, first off, thank you for making this a lot more open process than I think many of us had expected today. So I appreciate that, council members. And I'm going to start kind of backwards. The first part is, I would like to ask for the council to delay this vote, but in that same regard, push it back to the commissioners so that they can do this same type of, have the same type of input that you guys are receiving today. And then I'd like to thank Mr. Augustino for him pointing out some of the statutes that are available to us. We know that, looking at the budget, the county already taxes $4 million, the residents, for the mental health levy, yet $0 of that has gone to Portage Manor in the last 15 to 20 years, which could be part of the cause for the deferred maintenance. With that being said, on the deferred maintenance, we know that buildings can and have been rehabilitated. We just have to look at Central High and, most recently, Fire Station Number 6 in downtown that is now a nice restaurant. So that is not a question there. The other concerns that I think that some of the council members have brought up in the past here is that the employees are leaving. We've heard from employees saying they're not leaving. We know the building can be rehabilitated. The resident conditions, the health department states that it's in good standing. That shouldn't be a problem. The other thing that we want to look at, that I saw one of the council members note, was the R cap. Speaking to Latoya at R cap for SSSA, that program is not going away, right? And then this is, the last point is a little more specific. I'm surprised that after Councilman Shatfield's April 3, 2022 replies to the South Bend Tribune, that they wanted more open public reasoning behind their decisions, so that we understand the logic to the council's choices. Why haven't the scrutiny of questions that you have done to Todd Zeigler from Indiana Landmarks, to Dr. Atoll today, to Ken, to Mr. Costello, that why haven't you asked those same questions of the commissioner and attorney Mish, so that we can get real information and not just a FOIA that duplicates five times a lot of the information to confuse the public? So with that being said, I hope you will delay this vote and give us the opportunity for Dr. Atoll to put her plan together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Rod Enjo. Oh, I'm sorry, Joe Broden.
Yes, thank you. Joe Broden, 201 West North Shore Drive, South Bend, Indiana. I'm addressing you as a separate branch of government. You exist for a very specific reason, to provide oversight, and I just request that you please fulfill your duty in that regard and take the time to do greater due diligence on this significant question that is before you tonight, and also to have the courage to take two to three months to pull in the expertise that exists in our community to help problem-solve this. I do, I do, I am concerned that the recommendations from the consultants are not holistic in scope, that they've been, they are too narrow and perhaps biased toward closure and sale of the property. I also agree with many of the professionals in, that provide case management in our community, social workers at our area hospitals or our emergency rooms, or long-term care facilities, of which I have over 20 years of experience, that you have grossly and woefully, that those individuals have underestimated the ease and the longevity of placements elsewhere. And I can also concur with the family members and the professionals who have spoken about the significance and importance of the continuity of care, not just for the individuals, but also for their families and for us as a community. I also, in your role as due diligence, you have offers of assistance from professionals and members throughout our community that have approached you here tonight. That is my, in my opinion, that's the benefit of public discourse and public meetings, and I thank you for allowing that to happen tonight. However, if it just goes on, you know, if it goes unheeded, then, and not listened to, then we lose that benefit of our ability as a community to collectively solve our issues and our challenges. So, and then second, in terms of due, or third, in terms of due diligence, you have a viable business offer on the table tonight. Who knows what else could exist out there? Please explore the mixed use, mixed... Please explore the mixed-use residency, client mixes, and other suggestions, and even complimentary land uses at the site that can generate revenue and tax dollars for our community. And I'll just close. Use the time, have the courage to take the time to pull in your expertise and that of the others in the community, and to give a good faith effort to keeping the facility open and serving the current residents, but also those who will be future residents. We need this level of care. We need this niche of care in our community. And you have every reason tonight to take the time, and I encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Roland. Roland, you have three minutes to address the council.
My name is Roland Godet II. I live at 55705 Sichuan in Osceola, Indiana. And it distresses me to watch the council, listening to these people and their heartfelt speaking, and a few in particular looking down, not even giving people the consideration of looking them in the eye to see what's on their heart. That's rude. It's un-Christian. It's unfriendly. And it's unbecoming of council members to be that way. Now, my biggest thing is, in South Bend, I've found, I've been coming back and forth here since the '60s when my father moved here, and then we moved here 11 years ago. And it's always been about follow the money. In St. Joe County, South Bend, it's always about follow the money. Who is in line to develop this property? And what relationship do they have to members on the council, particularly the newer ones, who are so anxious to get this property off the books? And if it comes down between money and taking care of people, and you choose money over the care of people, you need to be recalled. And I would be the first one to sign any petition. And on top of that, I am, for most parts, a voting Republican. And I'm ashamed of you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Anyone else online? Seeing no one, the part of the public hearing in opposition to the Commissioner's resolution is over. I am going to suggest that we take a 15-minute recess. We will reconvene the council at 9:15. The council stands in recess until that time.